This conference will now be recorded.
Thank you for joining the City of Kingston's Common Council at our caucus meeting. Today is Monday, October 5th. My name is Andrea Schott, the council president and organizer for our virtual meetings. Before we begin, we would like to go over a few guidelines to help the system as efficiently and respectfully as possible. We ask that members of the public and press remain muted and off-camera for the length of meeting. As organizer, I reserve the right to mute anyone who unmutes themselves. Council members and city staff will control their own mute button. Good practice would be to mute yourself if you're not speaking to avoid background noise and feedback. If a council member wishes to speak, they will raise their hands. The chairperson will call on them before they speak by stating their name clearly for our audio listeners. All of our meetings are recorded. Both video and transcriptions will be made available to the public on the city's website. Although we do not have public speaking tonight, you can sign up to speak at our council meeting tomorrow by emailing elisatinty@kingston-n-y.gov by 2:00 p.m. tomorrow. Or you could submit written comments to the same email us, emtinty@kingston-n-y.gov, or by dropping them off at the drop box located outside the side door of City Hall. We also encourage you to reach out to committee chairs or your ward representative at any time. If you have any audio issues, send a text message to the following number, 8594-6120. Please note that phone calls will not be answered during the meeting. The phone number again to text is 845-594-6120. As the organizer, I reserve the right to lock and pause the meeting to eject anyone who has behaved inappropriately. Lastly, at tonight's meeting, we have an attendance chair, Renée Scott Childress; council members, Alderman Tony Davis; Alderwoman Michelle Hirsch; Alderman Steve Shabbitt; Alderman Riley; Alderwoman Rita Worthington; Alderman Doug Coop; Alderman Don Tollerman; Alderman Jeffrey Morell; city staff, we have city clerk Elisa Tinty; and corporation council Kevin Bryant. Thank you for your patience during these difficult path of the common council. I wish you and your family good health. I now turn to Alderman Scott Childress.
Good evening, everyone. This is Renée Scott Childress. Welcome. Glad you're all here tonight. Hope everyone is in good health and that all of your loved ones are in good care as well. Before we get started, is there anything from any of the committees? Any issues people have seen percolating up you want to mention? Jeffrey Morell?
Hi, this is Jeffrey Ventura Morell. I just want to mention that the laws and rules committee is hosting two public hearings this week. One on October 13th, I believe that's next Tuesday, that is on rezoning of Lawton Park and Golden Hill properties. And the second one, and that's at 6 o'clock, I believe.
7 o'clock.
7 o'clock, sorry. And the next one is on right before the next laws and rules meeting on October 21st at 6 o'clock, and that one is on the open space plan.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
The housing committee will be having its next meeting this coming Thursday, and we'll be talking more about short-term rental regulations and the potential for that. We have a couple of other things on the agenda for that night. I'll have an agenda out for tomorrow, so people can take a look at that and see what we'll be discussing if you want to join us. All right, great. So for tonight, we've got 11 items on the docket to consider. The first one, Resolution 147 concerns a budgetary transfer in the engineering department, $30,000, I mean $3,000 to cover anticipated overtime. Doug Coop, anything particular about this? I do know there's not a, there's not a committee report, at least in our copy, so I want to make sure that that's around somewhere.
Yeah, this is just a anticipated overtime to cover the retirement of Alan Agenett, believe it or not, 34 years. It's just a transfer from regular pay into overtime pay to cover some of the projects that he would be finishing up on. There's zero financial impact on, to the city on this. I think I would recommend we pass this. I don't see a problem with it.
All right, but I just want to make sure that there is a committee report before we vote on it tomorrow night, okay? I'm just saying it's not here in this particular list, so it's got to be around somewhere. Also, I want to congratulate Alan.
It may just be the, I haven't gathered signatures from everybody yet.
All right.
People did in the last couple hours, so Elisa and I will go over it and make sure everything is there, but thank you.
Yeah, like me. Yeah, so also I want to congratulate Alan. I'm amazed he's been there for 34 years. He looks like he's 35, so it's done well by him.
They should all go into the engineering department.
No, not some of us. Not if we're going to be building any bridges or things that actually have to stand up. All right, Resolution 148 here, resolution regarding interdepartmental transfer wastewater treatment plant, $10,000 to cover shortfalls. Doug, this one's also finance.
Yeah, this is a transfer totaling $10,150, the majority of which is $10,000 coming from regular pay to cover expenses, litigation expenses for Aslan, $10,000, and a little bit, $150 for some, for some minor equipment. We've, during the committee, we spoke with Kevin Bryant on this. I think we understand that this is expenses that are there in case of anticipated litigation. It's probably not anticipated, it's probably going to happen, but it's, you know, it's basically taken without any financial impact from the city, taken from regular pay, majority going into cover consultants, that is, cover the legal expenses for the litigation.
Great, thank you. So any questions, concerns about that one? All right, then 149?
149 is, sorry, a similar transfer, again, putting money into litigation for the, for Aslan, $10,000, and another $1,000 for wastewater, minor equipment. Again, we were briefed on this by corporate council, corporation council Kevin Bryant. I think we understand this. This is basically a reserve that's going in there for, to cover any litigation at will and probably will occur. So there are two resolutions that are putting in a total of 10,000 plus 10,000, or $20,000 into litigation for Aslan, but it's all coming out of regular pay with zero financial impact to the city.
All right, any questions, concerns about that one? All right, good. Then the next one is Resolution 150. This is about putting stop sign at the intersection of West Pierpont and MacIntee Streets. Alderman Davis, do you want to speak to this?
Alderman Tony Davis here. And, you know, straightforward, had constituents concerned down in that neighborhood about, and there was no, originally there was no stop signs at this dangerous intersection coming off of West Pierpont Street, going up of McInney and, and vice versa, people coming down McInney that had no stop sign. And so, city engineer John Schulteitz went out there and did his studies, whatever, and that's the recommendation he came back was to put stop signs at, and the two intersections there, at the intersections there.
Great, thank you. Any questions, concerns? Everybody good with this one? All right, then we'll move on to Resolution 151. This is another transfer, Department of Public Works budget, the amount of $12,561.
Yeah, this is really, turns out to be a housekeeping move. This was actually passed, had a finance in August, and I don't know why, but somehow it did not end up on the agenda for the, for the, in the September council meeting. But anyway, it's a transfer of $12,561 from various accounts at DPW into other various accounts at DPW, coming at a street, it's regular pay, storm sewer vehicle maintenance, street cleaning, vehicle maintenance into three accounts, streets retirement, storm sewer, and recycle vehicle maintenance. Net effect is it's a total of $12,561 with no financial impact. So this is really more or less of a housekeeping, keeping accounts balanced and so forth. I don't see, myself, I don't see a problem with this, and neither did the finance committee.
All right, any questions about this one? Concerns? Any issues anyone wants to raise at this point? All right, then, we'll move on to 152. This is consenting the sale of 104 MacIntee Street from the way we used to sell properties here in town. Alderman Morell, can you give us the background here?
Yes, so the, the property owner bought this property from the city in 2006. Back then, when you purchase property from the city, there was a stipulation on the deed that you'd have to meet certain criteria before you sold the property. And one of them was to get consent from the common council that we no longer have that practice, but she has done considerable repairs on the property. It's been inspected every year. She's met every other criteria set on the deed, and now she is ready to sell, so she needs to fulfill this requirement.
All right, everyone okay with this? All right, good. We'll let that one go through then. 153 then, this is in reference to rezoning multiple properties, both at Golden Hill and at Lawton Park, in anticipation of these properties being sold or being developed. So let's see, laws and rules, that would be back to you, Alderman Morell.
Yes, thank you. So this is the first step in the rezoning process. Alderman Tollerman, as a, as a follow-up to, a couple months ago, we had the county contact us saying that they were interested in marketing the properties at Golden Hill for development for elderly and workforce housing. And so this is just one more step to make it more appealing to, for them to market it to a developer. And so the first step on the, on the rezoning request process is to send the, send the request to the involved agencies. In this case, the Kingston Planning Board and the Ulster County Planning Board for comment. And as part of this process, we're also having, as I mentioned before, a public hearing on October 13th.
Great, and so just to be clear, this is simply sending out a request for information. This is in no way approving the zoning change. It's simply following part of the process in which we get responses from these other important agencies that can give us more information and recommendations here, right?
Correct. And as part of this process, also the public hearing is for us to hear from the public as well.
Okay, great. Alderman Davis, did you want to comment?
Alderman David Davis here. I just, I think you clarified it, so this is not saying that it's going to be, the zoning's going to be changed at this time. This is a request to go out to all the other interests and agencies that is a, is a request to have the zoning changed, but we want to hear your, have your input first.
Correct.
What we're voting on.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
We just have to vote on that process. And so, yeah, and this is the sort of thing where this will allow us also to do some work up there to really think through some of the things like traffic in that area as this process moves along, how we can make sure that the traffic in the area is funneled correctly for an economic development up there. All right, good. Then Resolution 1, I'm sorry.
Hi, I had my hand up. Alderwoman Hirsch, I just had a quick question. Well, the, I had asked if the laws and rules will be doing the short form seeker the way we did on Montrose, and I was told no. Is Kevin or Dan on?
Going through the planning board.
Yeah, so we're not the, we're not the agency making the decision. It's the planning board that would do that.
Why is this different?
Because you're not acting as lead agency.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Then, let's see, 154, way down here. Okay, this is one of the good, good parts of this job, dedication of a portion of the Kingston rail trail to Sergeant Charles W. Jones. Alderman Davis, can you give us the background here?
Alderman Tony Davis here again, and this is a long time coming, and it's been going on for several years, I believe, that the, and that this had been discussed, and finally has come into fruition, and request from Kevin Cahill, Simulman Kevin Cahill's office, and to dedicate part of this portion of the rail trail between Mary Street and Garrigan Drive in honor of Staff Sergeant Charles W. Johnson, who was the first Kingston resident to die in Vietnam. And so, and, you know, I'm related to some of the family members, so it's a great honor that, you know, being the chair of this public safety, or public safety, that this fell onto my, my committee. And so I'm glad to see that it's pushed, that we, we're moving this forward, and it's a long time coming dedication. If anybody's around, this Friday, and at 12 o'clock will be the dedication, and again, that section of Mary Street, between Mary Street and Garrigan Drive, and starting at 12:00 p.m. this Friday. So hopefully.
Correction, my, my invitation, I thought said 12:30.
Yeah.
Did it say 12:30?
I thought 12:30 also.
I don't have it, so it's 12:30 then. I thought it said 12, maybe, I'm just thinking of, I don't have it right here in front of me, so 12 or 12:30, and the sooner you get there, that's better. And so, and again, if we can have a good turnout for that, as many people as we can from the council, that would be greatly appreciated.
Yeah.
I want to thank the, and not only the Simulman Kevin Cahill's office, but also our city Department of Public Works and for, and getting the sign made in a timely fashion and, you know, and kind of install it. So, and then I want to thank, of course, the mayor and for pushing this through, and want to thank the, our correct commission for giving the approval. So hopefully everybody can show up and it doesn't, doesn't have any bad weather.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I thought I had the invitation right here, but I couldn't find it in my file.
I took it today.
Yeah.
So between 12 and 12:30ish, and if anybody has it, you can reach out to me tomorrow, and I'll be able to make sure I can give you the exact time and that it states on there. I don't have the paper in front of me.
Yeah, great.
Thank you.
All right. That's, where are we going to here? Oh wait, there's a bunch of different paperwork here. Where are we going, 155? Is this, yeah, 155, Resolution 155, page 33 of our packet. This is allocating $550,000 of CDBG funding for two projects, asbestos removal and for demolition of Planet Wings, as well as a whole series of issues relating to sewer repair in Prospect Street. This is from Community Development, so Alderman Shabbitt, can you give us the background here?
I can certainly do that. Actually, this took us a couple months, you know, to do a little research just to make sure that we could legally do this, and we were quite satisfied that, that we can. And after much discussion, we came up with the amount of $550,000 that we could use from the block grant funding that is available for projects like this. And we decided on these two projects. It serves a couple purposes. On one, these are the kind of projects that normally we would bond for, so, you know, if we can use block grant funding for something like this, it would lessen the amount of bonding that we would need for these projects. Certainly not going to finish up any, any of the projects, but, you know, every little bit helps. And actually, there is some money in our block grant account that we really have to start spending down, or we're going to get penalized at some point in the future. So we're picking out some projects here, and, you know, we had some good back and forth about what we should use them on. So, you know, I'm hoping everybody will support this. We spent a lot of time talking about this, coming up with amounts, and, you know, a lot of work went into this, so I would like to see everybody support this.
Great, Alderwoman Worthington?
Hello, Alderwoman Rita Worthington here. Maybe a minor issue, but just the legislation list doesn't read the same as the, the committee report. Committee report says including Prospect Street, legislation list stops at Midtown. I don't know if that's an issue or not, but I would love to see.
Oh, excuse me. That the legislation list never reflects it. It's just a, gives you the gist. It's just, otherwise I have to put the headings to look at almost every single one. They're not, it doesn't say the entire heading.
Okay.
Signed by what's in the committee report.
Okay, so that's what's important. All right, so let me just also thank Chairman Alderman Steve Shabbitt for just allowing us to go back and forth. He's right, we went back and forth with this, and it was a pretty lengthy discussion on what projects we were going to use. And so the fact that some of the, that this money is going to go toward Midtown Kingston, including Prospect Street as the report, including that street, is a good thing. We understand that we had been asking for some of the streets up here to be paved, but they could not because of the sewer work. And so you definitely don't want to pave over some streets and then have to dig it back up again. And so I'm happy about that. Hopefully everyone on here is fine with this and that it does go through. So I'm excited about this one. Thank you.
Alderwoman Hirsch?
Hi, this is Alderwoman Hirsch. I'm definitely in support of the sewer work for Prospect Street, and I'm just curious why the committee, the resolution can't say specifically that it's just for that, and why does it say including Prospect Street? Why can't it just say, you know, for Prospect Street?
Can I answer?
Yes, please do.
This is Andrea Schott. When the meeting happened last week, we didn't have exact numbers of the cost, so if it's going to cost $450,000 for Prospect Street, you know, that would give us wiggle room to then give the rest of the $50,000.
So why don't we just have two resolutions, one for Planet Wings and then a second one for Sewer?
I don't remember who told us to do it this way, or we just did it this way.
Go ahead, Alderman Schott, Shabbitt, you want to explain?
Yeah, the way I saw it, we did it because we're using the same money, same funds are being used for this. It's really about the block grant funding, not so much the projects, it's more about the, the money we're using. So I think that's why we decided to put it on, on one resolution. I mean, I think we could have done it either way.
All right, I just, I know that also, just what you're, everybody was referring to about the header for the legislation list. Like I was getting people, I was getting calls from people saying that it's going to cost $550,000 to knock down Planet Wings, so I think there's confusion also within the community about it.
I don't know. I mean, I think it's pretty clear that only $50,000 is going towards Planet Wings. I mean, I guess if you just read, read the headline without looking at the article, I guess you might, you may draw that conclusion, but I think the committee report's pretty clear.
So if the money doesn't go to Prospect Street, say that like the, what else can it be used for?
Well, it can be used for a variety of things, but whatever it's going to be used to will come back to the committee for approval. You know, somebody can't just say, okay, well, let's not do Prospect Street, let's do something else. It still has to come back to us to get approval, no matter what the project. These are just, these are a couple things we talked about. You know, there, there's actually more money that we could possibly use in the future, but these are, these are two projects we thought were worthwhile and would save us ultimately on, on bonding.
Okay, Alderwoman Worthington?
Yeah, so from what I understand, Alderman Steve Shabbitt, yeah, it's going to come back to us for ultimate approval. However, the reason why I'm thinking it read like this is that, and during negotiations when we were talking about it, Prospect Street was not specifically named, and so it just said Midtown area. And I asked if we could specifically put on the committee report Prospect Street, and so that's the way it was done. I'm not particularly happy with including Prospect Street, but I'm glad the street is named. So, you know, you choose your battles sometimes, Michelle, and we got it, and so we'll go with it.
Alderman Davis?
Alderman Davis here. So if it's saying Midtown area, so it could be other streets in Midtown? I mean, that's the way I read repairs in Midtown Kingston, including Prospect. So this is to say that it could be used for any street in Midtown, including Prospect. I mean, I'm assuming that's what Rita wanted to make sure that Prospect's included, but from what I'm reading, it could be Henry Street, Clifton, any, any street in Midtown? Is that the way I'm reading it? Including.
It can, yeah, it can, but again, it's, it has to come back to our committee for approval. Somebody can't just sit back and say, well, I think I'll take it from Prospect Street and use it somewhere else. You know, they still have to go through us, and we're, we're pretty firm on what we want to do with this. So, you know, I think, I don't think we're going to lose sight of what the money is, is being used for, right Rita?
Right, so if the design work and all that comes in, it's a $425,000, then there's that extra $75,000, any project, the mayor, DPW, or whom, whatever interest party would want to use it for, it's got to come back to that committee and get approval. They can't just, the mayor, for example, can't just move the money around, all right? It's got to come back for common council approval, and we are dedicated on that committee for that money to go into the streets, the neighborhood of Midtown, all in Prospect Street or near there, not, you know, not feathering it out beyond, okay? Anything else on that?
I should add, I, yeah, I keep saying it's coming back to our committee, but ultimately it's coming back to all of us. I mean, we'll make a recommendation on any suggestion that's made, but bottom line is going to come back before us. So you guys will have a say in it also.
Through finance?
No, through common council. I mean, we'll make a resolution on anything that's proposed, and then it will come before council for final approval.
Michelle, are you asking what committee it would go to first?
Yes, when you're saying us and another resolution or allocation.
It would have to go through general government, public safety, because that's where the CDBG funds are handled. I mean, not, I'm. funds are handled, I mean, not, I'm sorry, it goes through community development, not public safety. Okay, Alderman O'Reilly?
How you doing, Patrick O'Reilly? Hey, Steve, just wondering, obviously, putting this kind of money towards a sewer project, did you get, the engineer must have been there to give you ideas about this project, correct, in the DPW, the head of DPW, Ed, were they there, and that's why you decided to do this project on, or did you guys just come up with this yourself?
Well, no, this was, this was recommended to us, yeah, DPW is involved in it, the mayor was involved in it also, but, you know, we, we thought it was a good use of money, it will reduce the amount of bonding that we'll have to do, which, you know, that's a strong consideration for me, the less we bond, the better. This money is available for, for use like project, for projects like this, and the bottom line, we do, we have some funds here that we, we really have to start spending down. So, you know, I, as I said before, we're kind of killing two birds with one stone here, you know, we're spending down, we're cutting down on the amount of bonding we have to do, and we're getting some, some really good projects underway here.
Alderman Morrell?
Something else, you know, we also discussed possibly, at some point in the future, you know, the work on the bridge on Elmendorf Street, we could use money for that, you know, that's going to take some, you know, quite a bit of engineering work, you know, so we're not done with this by any, by any means, you know, we'll be, we'll be working on this for a while, but this is, this was our first dabble in this, shall we say.
Alderman Morrell?
Yeah, no, and to, to add to what Steve just said, I remember, I believe it was last year, when Alderwoman Worthington was asking why Prospect Street wasn't being repaved, and the answer that came back from engineering was because there was sewer work that needed to be done there, so, so they have been looking at that for quite a while.
Yeah, and.
Yes.
And just to add to that, and to answer Alder, Alderman O'Reilly's question, DPW actually was so gracious to come out and meet with me, and we walked the streets, and they explained to me the reason why the sewer work would need to be done, including the piping and the laterals and things like that, that go back and forth from the houses, and so, yeah, they're, they're included in this decision big time, they say, they're saying that it needs, the work needs to be done in order for the streets to be paved.
Yes. And we're dedicated to investing in Midtown as we are in all parts of Kingston. Great, thanks, so if that's anything else on that one? If not, then we'll move on to Resolution 156. This is about the transfer of a landlocked property on Elmendorf Street to the County of Ulster. This is from the Finance and Audit Committee, Alderman Coop, can you give us a little background here?
Alderman Coop here, this is a recommendation from the mayor to transfer a small piece of property, 10,491 square feet, it's, it's close to Elmendorf Street, I think it's actually along the rail trail, and for the county to take it over, and the purpose is to expand non-motorized transportation alternatives. I think the transfer may involve a fee of, Kevin, back me up on this, or, or tell me if I'm wrong, but I think it could be a transfer for about $1 or so, but it's basically to, the only purpose is to expand non-motorized transportation alternatives.
That is correct, it would be a nominal amount.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any questions, concerns, issues about that one? Alderman Shabbat?
Yeah, I just wanted to add, if, if my memory serves me correctly, we discussed this for quite a while at the meeting, and I think we were all convinced that this is a piece of property that we would never be able to use, I mean, it's in such a position, we, we really couldn't do anything with it, so, you know, I think we all felt that it would be better served by transferring it.
Yeah, intergovernmental cooperation. Great, okay, good. Then last of all, 157, Resolution in support of a green amendment to the New York State Constitution. If you all looked at this, any questions, comments? This is in the nature of a memorializing resolution. I think that this is something that Kingston is a leader on in the state, working toward a green environment while still building jobs and housing, so, if everyone is okay with that one, any questions, concerns, enthusiasms you want to mention now? All right, if that's the case, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Get a motion in a second, Alderman Davis, everybody in favor? Aye, and great, then we'll see everyone right back here in virtual Landia tomorrow night, 7:30 for the actual common council. Take care till then.
Thank you.
Good night, everyone.
Thanks, Reni. Good night, have a good one.